First, will everybody turn their cell phones off? Yes. No?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call a meeting to adjourn, any additions or...
I have no changes.
And let's start with the first thing up to bat, which is a budget officer recommendation.
I'm assuming our former budget officer, current budget officer is willing to be
Yes.
The budget officer going forward. So I will make the motion that we appoint and approve for the 2015-16 budget year in term running as our budget officer.
Now, second motion, motion made a second to be a budget officer for 2015-16. Any other discussion? Call it, Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Budget calendar.
You've seen a draft of this calendar earlier, I think even in December we showed everyone this just to find out if there were conflicts. I also emailed it to the budget committee and there have been no conflicts with these dates. So it maintains budget meetings at the end of April with a day in between. So this shows a meeting on Wednesday and then a break on Thursday and a meeting on Friday to wrap up. I thought that day in between was useful for staff to get minutes done and to still kind of get work done, and I think our budget committee liked that day also.
Yeah, I thought about it last year.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve as presented, the 2015-16 budget calendar.
Now, second motion, motion made a second to accept the fiscal year 15-16 budget schedule as given. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Parks and Rec. Pam, can you give us a brief on this?
A brief? We were awarded an Oregon Park and Rec grant last fall to create a Lake County Park and Rec master plan with several partners onboard and support letters from, you know, partnering agencies. In the grant application, we stated U of O Community Service Center as a contractor that would be willing to create the Park and Rec plan for us. We'd spoke with them the year before and they thought that would be a great project for their community service center, which uses graduate students for this type of planning. So, once we were awarded the grant, U of O said, yes, we'll do it again, and this is their contract to perform the work for us, the Park and Rec master plan. Attached to the contract is both the grant agreement with the Oregon Park and Rec Department and then also the scope of work that we've agreed to.
And it's been reviewed by councilor, I see.
Yes.
And it's to... When would actually physically be in Lake County?
February, I think it's the 23rd and 24th. They're actually gonna do a Christmas Valley workshop on Sunday, I think it's the 23rd. Glennna Wade is gonna give them some ideas for times and locations. Then they'll be in Lakeview on Monday to meet with the task team. They were meeting on Monday or Tuesday, and they'll do a Lakeview community workshop that Monday night, I think. So that's when they'll first be physically present. But we've met with the project leader over Google Hangouts, and then I met with the team last Friday using Google Hangouts. So, they're working already. They're gonna start calling stakeholders next week. The task team was provided a list of potential stakeholders and I've received some feedback on additions and we have about 25 different stakeholders that will answer...
Countywide?
Countywide. That will answer, you know, U of O's questions about Park and Rec and priorities and what setting and things like that.
And the stakeholders covers all corners of the county, Palos Grande, Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale, Le Pine Creek?
Um, we tried.
Tried, yeah.
Um, yeah. We tried to get as much not only geographic representation but also agency representation and community members. Again, the stakeholders is just the first kind of phase, and then the community workshops hope to get even more participation there from who wasn't a stakeholder, who wasn't represented as a stakeholder.
I certainly appreciate your admission upon this and the other partners, John Adams and others.
It just seems like it's the right timing. I think we've got some good things going on in Lake County, and if we can get some of this type of planning set forth, maybe, you know, now's the right time to get everybody onboard and start moving forward with ideas that the community puts forward.
There's gonna be, with that plan, lots of opportunities. I mean, obviously, you know, we haven't been able to take advantage of both in-house and our planning as well as, you know, statewide or federal. So, I too agree, it's great. You've been very inclusive.
Now, comprehensive use plan actually calls for endeavors such as this, so after a few decades, we're progressing. So, we need now to approve and sign this agreement with U of O.
Yes, it's the contract for them to perform the work.
I'll make a motion that we approve the U of O Park and Rec master plan contract. It's subawards agreement number 21970.
Now, second motion. Motion made a second to accept the agreement 21970 between Lake County and the University of Oregon for the master plan, rec, Park and Rec master plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, they'll conclude sometime in June, maybe early July at the latest.
Yeah, they should conclude in June, that's when their calendar school year will end. Then it'll be up to us to do approvals through both the planning commission and then you generally. Which could go, you know, July, August, just depending on how meeting dates are set. That's the plan. The four team members I met on Friday, some of them have been to Lake County, they actually look at vacationing here, so it's nice that they already have some ideas about Lake County. But their degrees ranged from masters in public administration to law degrees, community planning, so it's nice to see a variety with that group. But they're pretty darn excited, they like the area, it'll be fun to get their feedback.
We've had a longstanding relationship with U of O and various programs. I am OSU, I'll put that in for you, please. Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Amy.
Laboratory Sheriff Department remodel proposal.
Well, we got plans for the Library Sheriff, Community Justice, but basically, I call it the first phase of the courthouse on this main floor, right here, the first floor, whatever you wanna call it. So, we got, put plans together, I've met with all three commissioners at one point and kinda went over, so I'm here to get these plans approved so we can move on, move forward and get started on this project.
Dave, I've only got one more question, I didn't realize until I was looking here. So, what you're after is the approval to move forward with this plan for the main floor, because we do have a partial second and a partial second west and second north. Are we moving forward with those two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it. Partial north is the sheriff's. After the assessors move out down here, it's been the north end of courthouse.
Code window.
There'll be restructuring of the sheriff's office and also probation.
Right. What's planned is, is course library first, because that's the stuff.
Have to get us out here.
Have to get everybody out here and just kinda move everybody down here and then get everybody out of there and out of the sheriff and the...
Assessors.
Assessors and do what we need to do there and then we'll move to the third floor. Still working with the state on some things, far as courtroom and jury rooms and stuff, if it's still possible, so that's why I haven't put anything in place totally on the third floor yet, because we're not sure.
Right.
Yet, so that's why, this is just mainly, that's why I kinda called this the first phase of it all.
The affected individuals, meaning all of us commissioners, you talked to all of us and sheriffs and everybody, everybody's kosher with it.
Yes, everybody I've talked to. And there's a few twists and ears that I had to do, but I got it through, so.
So, everybody you talked to agreed, so you selectively didn't talk to somebody?
Oh, no. I talked to them.
I'll make a motion that we approve the second floor remodel proposal, it's listed as the Library Sheriff Department, but as presented.
Now, second. Any other discussion?
No, the only thing, I know Dave's put a great deal of work into this and worked with the design folks and contractors to assure that everything's good and our building officials, so thank you.
I've met with all the men of the contractor, building official, and of course the design people, we've walked through with every one of them, so.
And a lot of the general public have been asking, ever since the library moved to the new location, well, there's been a methodical process, one is getting the windows out, getting all of the other stuff cleared out, coming up with a plan, we all was working a plan in the process anyway. So it's just a methodical progress, and it's gonna happen.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave.
Denise, we got special transportation.
Special transportation, this is our RFP for our next biennium for 2015-2017. This RFP does include both state funds and federal funds. Prior, we always did separate RFPs, it's just a lot cleaner to put those all under one bucket and divide it out at one time instead of trying to divvy it out at different times. We were awarded for the state funds, again, the hundred and sixty thousand, which was the supplemental funds that we were provided last biennium, and for the federal funds, we were awarded a hundred and twenty-six thousand, so it has significant funding to do what we need to do in the county for our 2017.
Just for the audience, I know this idea, it's concrete from us. For the audience, can you give a little brief on how we expand these funds to different parts of the county?
The RFP will go out for providers that actually provide the services to our citizens. Currently, we have three providers. We may receive more through this RFP process. Those providers provide service both on call demand and of unscheduled trips. They provide service for doctor's appointments, shopping out of the area and in the area, recreation, if they wanna go to Crater Lake or go to the Plano Ashland, they can load up their bus and go there.
Primarily for seniors and disabled.
Disabled, that is correct.
But that doesn't mean that everybody cannot...
That is correct.
Along with meeting the senior and the disabled.
If there's space on the bus, they are welcome to provide transportation for whomever, so.
Well, I appreciate you getting this done, such a timely year for the next biennium.
Just to give you guys a heads up, hopefully in the near future, I will also become part of an RFP for the purchase of our vans for the Ladders of Opportunity grant that we were awarded. I'm working on figuring out exactly what they need. We know that it needs to be all those ride and heavy duty, so we're working on that, but that'll be coming shortly.
Well, where the program was, let's say, four years ago and where the program sat right now is just like literally night and day, Denise, and it's because of all the work you've done.
It's really coming together. I've got some good providers and good input, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special transportation from 2015 through 2017 RFP as presented.
Now, second motion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting minutes.
We have two sets, it's two sets that you two can approve. The other set, you are not present, so I'm new brand to be present. So, we have December 17th and December 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December 17th and December 30th as presented.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jennifer.
Ginger.
Ginger. Stephanie.
Whoever you are. Yes, sir.
Anything to share with us?
I had a great drive about, whatever you wanna call it, the end of last week, Wednesday through Friday in the northern part of the county. Met with several folks there, learned a great deal about several different things. Now I have more questions than I have answers, so I'm gonna be coming to you all and asking some questions so I can have a little further understanding. Probably the most critical meeting that I attended or that I was involved with was, I'm trying to remember, I think it was Thursday evening at the fire hall in Silver Lake, the state fire marshal held a hearing about the gas station closing, except for, you know, the card service. And, you know, the hearing was about establishing a hardship for the residents so that they could do the card lock. But the underlying real issue was, what is that gonna do to the very flagging, the economy of Silver Lake? And even in Christmas Valley tourism, there's still a store that's fairly, has a fairly brisk business and a restaurant there, and not having any gas service for people that are passing through, there's now, there will not be any gas service from Le Pine to Summer Lake, so, except for side John up to Christmas Valley, if people know about it. So there were, you know, there's all sorts of issues about signage at Le Pine and signage at Summer Lake and signage at the road probably into Christmas Valley. They are going to make a decision about the hardship issue today or tomorrow, so it's fairly quickly...
What do you mean to say, they're gonna make a decision?
The fire marshal will make a decision about, you know, whether or not they feel there's a hardship for the card lock. And then they will keep the station open, just, they've been just open three days a week. They'll do that for another two weeks and then to let people, you know, get used to the concept and then they'll shut it down and just have the card lock. Two issues that were really not addressed or answered was about signage, who's gonna be responsible for that and how, you know, how's that gonna work? And the other issue is card, the cards are basically a charge account. So, they're gonna have to be able to pass muster for a charge account. Some seniors, some folks are just paying cash because that's how they manage and maybe they don't have good credit, so how is that gonna work? And then, oh, and then there was a third one, is what, how's, what's gonna happen with propane? There will be no access to propane because you can't do a card lock on propane. So anyway, it brought up some pretty big issues, and I had a very short conversation with the owner that was, I mean, it was a good, I mean, it was a good conversation, but it was, there is no choice there. The only choice that could possibly be is that they would find someone who would be willing to take over the station. And the question is, what are the terms of the lease of the station? And is that why people have not been able to make a go of it? And then the other question to the fire marshal, which they were gonna check on and find out is, is might be possible to have the station open during peak times during hunting season and/or during the summer months when things are, but that's still gonna be up to the owner as to whether or not he would be willing to do that. But times people were asking us that, I mean, would that be possible? And if he was willing to do that, would the fire marshal agree to then take the card, allow the card lock after the busy time was? And they were gonna check on that, too. So it was a, I mean, it was a really good meeting and I think there was a lot of good sharing, it was fairly well attended, there were probably 25 people there, two people from the fire marshal and the rest of them were, you know, local people. And I just kinda happened to stumble into knowing about it and I was glad that I was able to be there, because I, I mean, it's a significant issue for that very small community, it's a big deal. And there was some question about, is two weeks long enough for people to get their applications in, get their cards? I mean, there's just so many different variables and issues, and they were really hoping that Staub could be flexible in how they were going to phase all that in. There was discussion about possibly using credit cards, so, but that's a whole nother system that's complicated, expensive, that they would not be able to put together, anyway. So I thought, I was sure that you understood and knew about it, but I, it's right down to the wire now of happening.
So Ginger, were there any folks from the federal government, i.e. the Forest Service there, expressing any concerns about their access to fuel, because they, I think, gave up their onsite, I think, fuel?
I think their card lock, the fire department has their own card lock, card. Jeanette, I can't think of her last name.
Wilson.
Pardon?
Wilson.
Yes, she was there, she was right, sitting right next to me, it doesn't seem to be, it wasn't an issue there. It doesn't sound like any, those entities are already set up because they've been closed down four days a week, so something, you know, the card lock system has been working for them and the fire departments have their card lock for a long time, so they can access after hours and the ambulance service and everything. So, though, that does not seem to be an issue, it's just, it's, it's the local people who are still there that may not qualify, although they said they would try to work something out, but there, it was very vague, that part was vague. And then people traveling through and how, you know, it's gonna take time for people to know that they, that it isn't accessible. There are very stringent rules about, you know, they can't go knock on the door and have, and use somebody else's card lock and pay them cash, there's, you know, there's rules about all of that, so it's, yeah.
So, the key player is Ed Staub and company?
Correct.
And fire marshal?
Correct.
And the owner. Does Ed Staub own that gas station?
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
Anything that a county can facilitate?
I don't know, I mean, my, my thought, I mean, I did a lot of thinking about it when I left. My, you know, and it sort of goes along with some of the other things that are happening, you know, with Jerry's Restaurant and other, is trying to get the word out that there are options or the ask for help for options, because maybe if we would, I mean, of course, I just came into all of this a month and a half ago, possibly trying to recruit somebody, you know, do some, you know, really major, and I'm sure that they probably did something, I don't know what, and I didn't really ask about that because there were so many other pressing questions. But I think that, you know, trying to help owners if they are, I mean, because, you know, Jerry's really isn't an economic issue in my mind, it's an issue of an owner that has had some illness and some things that have, you know, that are, that are difficult. What can we do to let people know that they can come and ask for help in advance or when it happens or whatever, so that they aren't faced with this type of thing, this closure? Because it's demoralizing to them and to the community, and then it's hard to get up and get going again and recruit somebody into a business that's already closed, it's really, it's, that's hard. And, I mean, there was lots of discussion after the meeting in Silver Lake, you know, amongst people, and I went to dinner with two or three people at the restaurant after, and there was some pretty brisk discussion about how probably somebody could make a go of it in that gas station, because it's got mechanic bays and it's, you know, that part is in place, and there really isn't a lot, I mean, there is that, this type of business in Christmas Valley, but evidently it could still really be vital there, but it's, you know, maybe that's just people talking and thinking and remembering what it used to be like, whether or not that's really, you know, a viable option or not, but the, my point is, is who are, are we making enough of an effort, when I say we, county, me, SGO, anybody? How much of an effort or what is it that we need to do to let people know that they can come and ask for help? I mean, we have it on a webpage sort of, kind of, we have, I don't know what the answer is, it was just a question that came to me, you know, what can we do to let people know so that we don't, we aren't reacting, that we're trying to be proactive? It takes time to develop systems and get the word out, I know that, but you could really feel it in the room, you know, it was, it's a little scary, you know, even to people who are gonna have a card lock, it's kinda, you know, like, I have to pump my own gas, how are senior citizens gonna do that? There were, you know, there was discussion about that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know a little bit more in the community, because I'll go back to the federal side of things. I think they can be a partner in helping facilitate that, they have the latitude to, you know, allow oil changes and small repairs and different things, and I look at Paisley and the station there, it's a pretty thriving business.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
And the gas part honestly is just a secondary part.
Oh, exactly.
Kind of pays for the lights, but all the other work that goes on, so it's gotta be the right fit, as you alluded to.
Right.
But someone, I think, in Silver Lake with the farming, ranching, federal agency and others could make a real go of it there.
Right, so my, my next step on that, my thought was to go to the federal agencies and to talk to some of the local ranchers, I mean, probably just even phone calls to say, you know, if there was something there, could, do you have the ability to use it? Would you use it? Would you, anyway? And then be able to have a conversation maybe with the community or something, I don't know, find out from the community who in the, who in that area, I mean, maybe even contact Bob Davis, are you interested in doing something in Silver Lake? I don't know, it's just, it seems as though we could have better conversations or better lead time or something, I don't know.
Be a little more...
And it's sort of a more proactive, so we're...
Yeah.
Looking at some of these things that have happened that feel real tragic and, and it's, I don't, I don't think I'm blowing that out of proportion, I think people feel bad about it, you know, but they don't know what to do, and so.
Maybe the contacts learn from, maybe other small communities have gone through the same scenario.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you'd be wasting your time to talk to Bob related to...
Well, I didn't...
Well, I'm thinking, he knows them because he has a lot of them that stop in his station.
He may know people, too.
Yeah, that's the whole thing, Ginger, I think he might know some people that have some really good mechanical and...
Right.
Mr. Fix-It skills that might be looking for an opportunity to have their own business and wouldn't mind relocating.
Even if they could, I mean, maybe they wouldn't have to, I mean, I don't know how long Staub's only been operating, three days a week, but it's been a while, and everybody's pretty well trained as to when that is. So, you know, it might, it might be that it wouldn't have to be 24/7, because, I mean, people do, the locals do figure it out, and then they help whoever comes through figure it out. But, I mean, and they, they have had, up until now, they've had a 24-hour access call, but I'm not sure that they are even doing that now, they don't come out, you know, if they get, I don't know. They don't come out, you know, if they get, I don't know what people are doing.
And flat tire comes about, have its own makings.
Yeah, or you run out of gas, it's up to you to figure it out.
Tom O'Leary might be another inflammation reliever.
Okay, thanks, yeah. So.
Allen Parks, even though he's a little more north.
Right, right.
It's all one big, pretty much a big community.
Right, yeah, it's pretty spread out. So, but it was good, I, you know, I met with several different folks. Some of the people that I really wanted to meet with weren't available. Thought they were going to be in town and it, well, you know what it's like, go and, you kind of go with the flow. That was, it was, it was helpful. I stopped at Playa, that was very interesting, very helpful. I'm going to, going to go there on Sunday, they're having an open house to find out more about their residency program and movements. It's actually very unique, I think we're really lucky to have it in Lake County, to tell you the honest truth. I was very surprised and very impressed with what they're attempting and what is happening.
It's kind of Ashland-like in a way.
Yeah, it is, it is. I mean, it's really kind of a jewel and I, and I think the current director has really, she's only been there about a year and a half, but she's really done a lot to, to solidify the program and they're getting some pretty competitive, they're being, becoming very competitive in the residency world with that type of business and they're getting some really excellent artists and scientists and people there to do, to do them. So, and then these workshops that they're going to do are really going to impact and be good for us. They're coming to do a workshop at the library, the residents themselves, as part of their residency, will do things for the community, so I think that'll be really helpful.
And were you able to touch base with any reps from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, I was. It sounds to me like the, and I need to check this out because there was a discrepancy between people as to whether or not this was actually going to happen. But it sounds like once a month, and I think it's like the fourth, I shouldn't say, it's, once a month, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and the North Lake Chamber of Commerce are going to meet at Summer Lake Lodge and have a meeting, a combined meeting. And, but there was some discrepancy about whether or not, so I got to, I needed to check it out with Julie. But it was something that came out of the gala and Todd being here. So I thought that was, it's, you know, it's really positive.
Todd being Tom Andrews of Pacific Power.
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't Pacific, I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong name, it's the Travel Oregon person. Right, sorry.
Tom or something.
Yeah, that's how I, I.
I remember the face.
Yeah, I know, me too, I'm sorry, I'm bad with names sometimes. So that's, that is definitely happening and there is a meeting the end of this month for the Town of Lakeview for some folks to begin discussions about revitalization.
Yeah, Ray Sims is kind of heading that up.
Yes.
On the chamber up there, I was talking to one of the members a couple of weeks ago. When Commissioner Shaw and I first came on, we had a kind of a standing procedure that we would drop in during the meetings when we could, except later they changed their meeting to conflict with our meetings and we haven't done that. But that one, we're just going to take it back to the main chamber up there to see if they can shift their meeting dates, just to allow for us to drop in periodically.
Right, February tenth is their next meeting. I can look and, go look and see what the time is.
Date, we don't have a meeting.
Right, it's on a Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Right, so I can get you the time, I'm not remembering the time of where, they hadn't decided where it was going to be yet, but.
Were you able to drop in on Parks and Rec Christmas Valley?
I did, but the person that was there was somewhat challenged, I don't, it wasn't the regular person, but I did speak with someone who had just recently been on the board, I did have a meeting with them. They are in the process of changing their name and, I think, in preparation for trying to expand the tax district. Sounds like things are fairly, you know, pretty much the same. It's one of the thing, one of the areas where I have more questions than I have answers right now because I understand that there's, they own some property around the airport. Anyway, there's, so it sounds like it's pretty much the same. I think they're trying to recruit some board members, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I don't quite understand the structure yet.
So in your travels along the same lines, did you run into anybody that wanted to talk about the ATV ordinance?
Yes, there were a couple of people that expressed concern about, and they were ATV users. And their, their concern was more around how to get, a couple of things. One was how do we get over, what do we do when we come to a place where we have to travel on a state highway or, or roads that aren't county in order to get from one place to another? Because I guess, I mean, I don't know this myself because I'm not familiar, but there are little connectors that are not county, they're maybe state or, or whatever, BLM or public or whatever. So that was one thing. And then the other one was just a, a general concern of safety, you know? Running into somebody, you know, especially bigger trucks and in the summertime when they're hanging and moving equipment and that sort of thing and you don't see, you know, you're not looking down, you're looking out and somebody bebop's alongside you or whatever. I mean, that was, it's just a general concern about safety.
We need to keep an eye on that, yes.
Yeah, that's, that was pretty much it, thanks.
Anything else for the go of the order?
Not really, I've got a conference call at eleven, so got plenty of time.
Well, I'll adjourn at nine thirty-seven.